Okay. Good. Nobody, I don't have Tom. Okay, he said he was maybe feeling under the weather. Oh, okay. I'm gonna call to order this meeting of the Westford School Committee on Tuesday, November 12th. We are not live, and so if anyone wants to join us, we're in conflict with the Select Board tonight. So Zoom is the best, the only way to watch us real time tonight. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand and join us at the table.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'm gonna move on to, oh, there's Tom, great, hi, Tom. We're gonna move on, oops, a roll call meeting, roll call votes tonight. I'm gonna move on to the consent agenda, there were some meeting minutes in the packet, as well as, I will retroactively add a memo, but you all received an email from me about the Negotiations Subcommittee. And I just wanna add some of that context here for anyone watching, hold on, let me find my note, shoot, shoot, shoot. I'm sorry, I didn't have that up. And I don't wanna misspeak, but, so basically, what I explained in the email and what's in front of us for a vote tonight is the dissolution of a Negotiations Subcommittee, because as you remember, in June, every year, we organize ourselves into our many busy subcommittees, and we always put three names of members who are interested in attending negotiation sessions. However, I've recently learned from our legal counsel that by using the term Subcommittee for those three people, anytime a quorum of those people are, of those members are in attendance at something, that's actually, it needs to be an open posted meeting, so even negotiations sessions themselves would be an open meeting. And obviously, that's not our past practice, that's not the goal of negotiations sessions. And so what dissolving that means is really no change in practice. We're still gonna use that as a way to say, here are two or three people that are gonna try to attend these sessions alongside administration for negotiations. We're just not using the term Subcommittee, because in practice, it's never really had that designation. Those individuals aren't making decisions or deliberating separately. We always get updates or decisions as a full committee in executive session. So the negotiations team hasn't ever really operated as a Subcommittee. And so I'm just formally removing that title from it, so that we can keep doing the same practice we've been doing, and just not call it a Subcommittee, because that triggers all kinds of things for it. I hope I explained that right for the public. You all should have that a little bit clearer in your email, and I will put that in a memo for the packet. Any questions on the consent agenda? Take a motion to approve?
Second motion is so moved.
In a second?
Sorry.
Anyone a second?
I seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, it was at the same time, sorry, 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 sorry. Okay.
We're being efficient.
Wow, all in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And I am an aye, thank you. Next up is public comment. I'm really out of whack today. Public comment, reminder that public comment for any item or topic on or off the agenda is always available near the top of the agenda for individuals to share their thoughts. Speakers will be limited to two minutes per person, please use public comment, even if you refer to something later on the agenda. Virtual public comment is available through Zoom, please raise your hand and you'll be promoted to panelist or in person at the microphone. And since we have nobody in the room, we'll give it a minute for Zoom. Don't have anyone on Zoom looking to speak. Okay. All right, thanks. So right on to informational updates.
Thank you.
Start with superintendent.
So we got news from the ghostwriter, that students had attended the National, the National High School Journalism Convention in Philadelphia, and a number of our students came back having been recognized there. So we wanted to congratulate Shrivis Arun, honorable mention for his editorial writing. Grace Su, honorable mention for her news writing. Kate Kelly, honorable mention for her feature writing. Penelope Zambrana Pita, honorable mention for her commentary writing. And Arshia Bhattachara earned Superior, first place, for her review writing. So they, they perform well when they do this, this is a national thing that they participated in. It's just, you know, great for them, wanted to also thank and congratulate Ms. Fondin and Mr. Holbrook, the two advisors, for helping the students prepare for that.
What I thought was interesting about this is that it's kind of like DECA, like it's, it's like a competition. It's not, it's not just, oh, they submitted their ongoing work and were recognized. It's like you show up and you're sort of faced with like a performance challenge or like a test. And then you write something all within like two hours, and then they're recognized for that, I thought that was cool.
Yeah. We, I don't, I can't remember if, if, I remember if any of you were able to see this or not, but we were, we enjoyed the vocabulary parade that the third grade Abbott students had, which they brought back, was my impression, because it was the first time I had seen it. And I think it was something that they brought back, where the students, they dressed up, they created costumes for a vocabulary word, and, you know, marched around the building, and it was awesome. And it just kept going and kept going, and there was a moment where a student fell right in front of us, and we were like, oh my gosh, are you okay, and only to find out that it was, it was part of the student's word. And so I was like, oh, that's fantastic.
What was the word?
Uh, that part I don't remember. It wasn't tripped, it was definitely, it was, it was, it was a more complicated word than that. But we were all like, huh!
What school was that?
It was Abbott.
Abbott.
It was great, it was loads of fun, and I was glad to see them do that, the students all seemed to have a great time. Some, some, some students needed assistance carrying their costume, because the costume itself was so large.
If you saw anyone dressed as a pulley.
Okay.
It was crafted at my kitchen table.
Very good, okay, okay, all right, very good.
And what was fun about that as well is that all of Central Office came out to say, including our students in the Roots program.
Oh, great.
That was great.
It was great. We, we just found out that WA has earned Gold Recognition from the AP, AP School Honor Roll, right, so that's, they get a Gold Recognition is based on their college culture, college credit, and college optimization, and it's just a nice thing for the work that they're doing, to be recognized by the AP program as an honor roll school. And do you wanna share something?
Sure, at Stony Brook and Blanchard Middle School, they had a very successful rollout of their yonder pouches, and that is where students who are bringing cellphones into school each day are asked to place their phone into a yonder pouch, and they are very proud of how the students have responded to this and, and certainly cooperating. Staff are also sharing that the phones have been much less of a distraction this year, since the beginning of the year, and now especially with the yonder pouches, they're only gonna see improvements there.
Can I interrupt, just Courtney on that, on that note? I did notice some conversation happen over the weekend of students who had forgotten to unlock their phones or pouches before leaving. I'm just wondering if that's something that maybe you and Dr. Chu and maybe Ms. Hammer and Mr. Hislop can kind of discuss of, is there a plan, a Plan B in, in that event? Because I would hate for the pouches to be MacGyver'd, I don't know, in that event, because I can see how a student, especially when it's a new thing, might have, you know, just may not be on its wavelength, and could be home, and the school could be shut for the weekend and stuff, so if you could have some thinking about that, I think that would be helpful. At least for the first few weeks while we build habits, build new habits.
There was some discussion though, as well, about there are some lobby spaces that are available to after-hours to some extent, so that might be something that there's a pretty simple solution.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do, they are, they are keeping the, the unlocking apparatus available in the lobby, but it, only to a certain time, right, so again, there's still that.
I don't know, could the police station have it or something?
That's what I was thinking, in terms of maybe we provide one of them at the police station, or probably, or something to that effect. Yeah, okay.
Central Office is open till four, we can accommodate.
Yeah, we'll talk, we'll have to talk, I'll talk with, because I think it's, the aspect would be, is, is there, is there something like the police department that would be open all weekend long? So I'll, we'll talk with, we'll, we'll figure that out.
Okay, appreciate that. And Westford Academy had shared that they had two teams that made it into Divisional State Championships this past weekend. The Westford Academy Girls Cross Country qualified for the MIAA Divisional State Championship this past weekend, and the Boys Cross Country qualified for the MIAA Divisional State Championship this past weekend, with Jack Grafero winning first place. So, that's something exciting.
Thank you. Next up is school committee updates.
All right, so I've got a couple of them. The Town DEI Committee met on October 30th. Dr. Chu was helpful in sharing that we have our district-wide root cause analysis event scheduled for December 6th. That's gonna be a six-hour affair, full day that day, with AIR, the American Institutes for Research. This is part of the district's ongoing Equity Audit, and I know the invitations have been sent out. We're districts looking for about forty participants to participate. The Equity Audit was designed to gain a conceptual understanding of some of the factors that drive equity gaps for our students, and so this event is gonna dig deeper into the data and take away some summaries and some problem statements that we can then move into year two of that phase, year two phase of that audit and some action steps, so. You know, I'm gonna be in attendance, I don't know if others on the committee will be here, so, should be a great day.
What are, you said they're looking for participants, like what are they looking for from the particip, like who, who can be a participant?
I think it's, it's a well-balanced group of the community, so.
Yes, so I can answer that question first, so we, we, we tried to focus it, we wanted to have around forty people. So we sent an RSVP to different stakeholder groups, and then we're gonna work with them to find out, okay, well, if, for example, like with our, with our school-based DEI team, we sent the, we couldn't invite the entire team, because that's over forty people in itself. So we invited the Equity Subcommittee Group that was working on the Equity Audit, or the Equity Audit subgroup. And then if they're not able to make it, then we'll invite more people. We sent, we sent the invitation to members, not the, not the full Town DEI Committee, but to, I think, there was four, I think it was the leadership and, and people who have been working with us specifically. And then we've invited like the leadership from CPAC, the principals, the curriculum leaders, all of you. I'm trying to think of the, the list, was, it was forty people. Our students, right? Yeah, I think that, that's an example of the cross-section.
Are we any town residents representation on that?
Well, residents who are connected to one of these groups, not, not like an at-large situation, but a number of residents who are connected to groups, yeah.
I will continue to help plug the Westford DEI Committee's Town Website Page, so if you go to their section, they have their, their members, their agendas, their minutes. Kind of segues nicely into their website includes the multicultural calendar, holidays, observances, heritage and history months, and, you know, some podcast episodes, I think they're up to nine, and Catherine, I think you were featured on one of those, so. Definitely should be a page you check out. School Start Time Subcommittee met today. We are further dissecting and analyzing our proposed two-tier scenario, potentially for a recommendation before the entire committee. DBUS has been there and attending, we appreciate that attendance, we're expanding our use of the software, which is called TransFinder, and hopefully we'll add to that capacity and that logistical expertise as we plan just transportation in general in months and years to come. We're gonna plan to meet next week again, and we wanna be on target for a full presentation before the committee on December 9th, so. Hard work, Catherine.
Any other school committee updates?
CPAC meeting this Thursday in this particular room, which is Millennium Conference Room B, seven PM, seven to eight thirty or so. CPAC is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Anyone's welcome to join, I believe Dr. Chu will be with us, and
Mr. Coughlin as well.
Gerard Coughlin will be joining us too, so.
And it's November.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, in November is CPAC Awareness Month.
We should be all wearing yellow.
Yes, I'm bad, I'm not wearing yellow, and others guess them, but.
You can save the yellow for our next meeting, when we have CPAC representatives coming, yeah.
Absolutely.
Any other school committee updates? Oh, Tom's hand is up.
Yep.
Arts-related, I had the opportunity to go see Curse Child at WA this opening weekend. Great show, if anyone hasn't had an opportunity to get there, and if you're able to still get a ticket, I recommend it. But the other thing is, I want to highlight the marching band season this year. The fourth year for Mr. Adam Shuckleton to be leading the, this group and several other ensembles. In his second year, he took on bringing the marching band to competition. Prior to that, the band had just been doing halftime shows for the ball team. And in their third year, A, you'll remember we took on a larger-than-expected hosting of a show, which went off really well. But then they also placed in the finals with the best score and best placement in their short history. So they took home a gold medal for second place, with a narrow, just about a point behind first place and two points ahead of third place. So very proud of the growth of that program, and looking forward to continued growth under Mr. Shuckleton's leadership.
That's awesome.
Thanks, Tom. Anything else for you?
I suppose our updates are the same, in that we were both at the MASCE conference last week, which I hopefully will share more of that as we have had time to digest, but it was a really, I think Valerie was there for half of it, and I stayed. It was a really interesting conference, there were some really good panels. You found there was a lot more kind of fiscally focused ones. And I will be sharing with you, I, I really enjoyed, we had a real-life Kennedy. For anyone who doesn't know, the Irish love the Kennedys, so I was texting my mother, making her jealous. But Tim Schreiber, who was one of the general accession speakers, and he was speaking about this kind of movement that he's trying to, that started with just looking at what is dignity in terms of political speeches, but it's kind of moving towards like how you can use this in the classroom, as a teaching tool, as a just a general approach across the building, and how we speak to each other, and also how, you know, you yourself speak to people, it's not just also looking at how people speak to you. So it's called the Dignity Index, for anyone who wants to take a look. And I'll, I'll be sharing that information with you, because I think it's a really interesting idea, very simple, it's not like a curriculum or anything. But, yeah, so it was, it was a really interesting few days, met lots of other school committees, and learned new tips and tricks and all of that, so, yeah.
Did we leave anything for the students?
I have a few things.
Okay. I'm so glad.
So first of all, we have advisory number two tomorrow, which is cool, shorter classes for students, and, you know, you get to eat lunch with your grade, which is fun. We also have Darba on Friday, which is very exciting. Tickets were on sale throughout school lunches for the past couple of weeks, but if students didn't manage to get a ticket, it is gonna be twenty dollars per person at the door, including for students. It's six to nine, and I do encourage you to get there early. Parking will be crazy, as there's also a football game on Friday, it is six o'clock versus Andover. I believe this might be the last football game, other than our Thanksgiving one, so definitely, you know, try and make it, but I also know that Darba is an exciting night as well, so maybe choose or go from both. We also have next Tuesday, on the nineteenth, the MGH Blood Drive, I believe it's during school lunches. Students sixteen or older can get a permission slip, get it signed by parents and participate. Students eighteen or older are obviously free to participate at their own will. We also have on Friday picture retakes, so for those students who, you know, didn't love it the first round, you got a second chance. I've been there. And to reiterate what Tom said, if you have not seen Harry Potter, it is absolutely incredible. I, I saw it, and I was like, I cannot believe this is a high school play, I was shocked as well, I have to give a shout out to the underclassmen, I expected to see a play with upperclassmen in the lead roles, and it is sophomores, and it is some freshmen that are really leading it, and I was, I was very, it was so cool. Some of the effects that they have are, it really brings it to life. And then we also have the twenty, class of twenty twenty-five, three-by-three, V3 basketball tournament on the Wednesday, the twentieth. That's two fifteen to six o'clock, and that's a fundraiser that all grades can participate in, but is run by the senior class, so that should be fun. And then I know this is early, and I don't wanna stress people out, I know Catherine, we were talking about the holidays, but the Holiday Bazaar is December seventh, and I wanted to mention it in advance, I don't know the exact times yet, but it is, that is set for that date, so mark it on your calendars. But, yeah, Daniel?
Yeah, I'm just gonna add to the Holiday Bazaar.
Yeah.
I do know the exact time, I believe it's nine AM to three PM. Parking will be pretty bad, so, just wanna warn you guys in advance. I believe this was mentioned last week, but, or two weeks ago, but French Exchange came, they just left a couple of days ago, I believe, so that was a great opportunity there. Most of WA's fall sports have ended, besides football, with many winter sports beginning shortly, I know a lot of teams are now having like informational meetings, and trials are coming up soon. And Stuco hosted Trunk or Treat about two weeks ago, and it was very successful, I've heard a lot of good feedback. And Quarter One just ended, and seniors received their Quarter One grades, which, if they can choose, they can send it to their early-action schools, and with that, Quarter Two begins.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to our business agenda, and start with a update from our postgraduate special education program called Roots, and welcome, Sage Alcosta.
Hi, everyone. Thanks, I'm Sage Alcosta, I'm the Student Support Leader at Westford Academy. So I just wanted to kind of give an update, last year, pretty much right around the same time, I had kind of presented to most of the school committee about a eighteen-to-twenty-two vocational transition program. So kind of up until really this year, Westford Academy had a program, but it was really embedded within the academy. And, you know, three years ago, when I started here, it was one of the programs that kind of stuck out to me that we could do better with this program, you know, really meet the needs of our, of our students. We had a larger group that was gonna be moving into and transitioning to an eighteen-to-twenty-two program. So the goal was to kind of just build a more robust program, so. You know, just to kind of give a little bit of background on what is really an eighteen-to-twenty-two vocational program, you know, it's, it's really designed for individuals ages eighteen to twenty-two who are eligible to continue to receive services beyond high school and kind of up until their twenty-second birthday. Really, programming should be based on the post-secondary vision, which is a big aspect of the IEP itself, and making sure that the team that's working with that individual is really working towards that post-secondary vision. There's a large focus on self-determination skills, it incorporates the development of vocational skills, daily living skills, and then there's a lot of collaboration with adult services, adult agencies. And then another aspect is really being able to connect with the local community as well. And so I just wanted to kind of give a little bit of a timeline as far as the progression of the, of the Roots development, so. You know, as I kind of mentioned, in the year like twenty-two, twenty-three, it was kind of, you know, that eighteen-to-twenty-two program was really identified as an area that, you know, we wanted to focus on. So last year in November, I put together a presentation with the help of, you know, many people. Luckily, it got approved, which was great, so kind of really from January until, you know, August, it was really building this program, you know, putting together job descriptions, hiring, interviewing, thinking about spaces, you know, the, the proposal had it that we would house this program here at the Millennium Building. You know, we talked about logos, the name for the program, we didn't have one yet, and kind of landed on Roots. R-O-U-T-E-S, so it's kind of a little bit of a play on that word, where every individual in the program has their own route, or route to, to travel, but that it's really in the core of this town, and that's their, their home roots, so to say. So we had a student design, I presented at one of our honors digital arts classes, and I got about thirty different designs for an idea of, you know, the logo for Roots, and the one we decided on is kind of in the back, a little bit behind you on the screen. And, and there's kind of the core values embedded, again, in that logo, so the, the students did a really great job. And then, you know, just a lot of work by a lot of people, and, and doors opened the day before the first day of school. We did a orientation for the families who were gonna be participating in the program. Give them an opportunity to see the space, they got to meet the lead teacher for the program, and it was just a nice way to, to kind of kick off the start of the school year. So for Roots, there were, the, the program is, is run by three staff members. So we have a lead special education teacher, Todd Foster, he comes in with, with a lot of experience. You know, he's been in the field for, for many years, he's done a lot of work with, with other programs for students ages eighteen to twenty-two, he has his, his transition endorsement, and, and has done a lot of work in kind of that process of transition. And, you know, he, he's taught in a variety of different, different areas as well, so. He's, he's done a lot with also the, the job site establishment, which, which will be helpful for kind of where we need to move kind of next for this program. And then we have two incredible job coaches, one is Jake Richardson, and the other is Shannon Manuel. So Jake comes to us from a very unique perspective, which is very advantageous for this program. So he had been a manager at a grocery store, and so he would, would train, you know, adults and, and other young adults, he actually worked with adults with special needs also to help kind of establish those job pieces. So now we have someone right in our program who's done that, so his, his lens and his expertise is gonna really complement the program and some of the goals of the program. And then Shannon is actually a former daycare teacher. So she kind of brings the perspective from a very young age level, but understands about that fostering independence piece, and that's a big aspect as well. And so while her experience might have been with the younger, you know, very, very little opposite end of the spectrum, you know, there, there are certain aspects and certain skills that you're looking for, and, and that ability to balance encouraging the independence, but also providing enough support is a really crucial part of, of working with individuals and, and helping them get to this, to, to where they need to be. Shannon's also very creative, and so one of the projects that we have going is using a cricket machine, and so it's, it's been right up her alley, so there's gonna be some fun things coming out with that. She's been working hard and putting together some lessons to teach the other adults in the program how to use the machine and how to make the designs, and so they're gonna start rolling out some projects with that, which will be great, so. Some to come. So currently, we have six students who are attending the program. Five students are, have graduated, or graduated from Westford Academy this past June, and we have one student who joined us from an added district placement. So, you know, the six have been working extremely well together, it's, it's a nice social group. Next year, the anticipated number is really having seven students, so the, we will continue with the six, and then there's expected to be one additional student from Westford Academy coming. And then, you know, just a couple projections about the program in the next couple of years, we, you know, seven is, is kind of the number that we're, we're looking, we're looking at right now. And then in three years, we'll have a little bit of a bump with, with eight students, and you know, these numbers are really just solely based on the students currently at Westford Academy, so this isn't taking into factor any other potential added district placements at this point. So these are kind of, you know, hopefully what we're, what we'll be getting, I'm not sure.
Can I just ask, Sage, on that note? Based on the staffing you have now and the resource-
Based on the staffing you have now and the resources you have now, what kinda capacity do you feel that we would have just as things are?
As things are, we, we could go um, you know, manageably, I would say easily eight, if not even a little bit higher, maybe like ten we could probably go to. It, it, it would just really depend on the individuals and what they're, you know, going to be doing. And, you know, the community pieces and those ones, and just juggling the, the shifts and everything. But um, but given the certifications and the experience that we have, we should be able to.
Awesome.
Get up to ten.
Oh, that's great.
So. Perfect. Any other questions? Sorry, I know I just went through a whole bunch of info, so.
I was gonna ask about uh, potential vocational experiences. Are you guys looking to add job sites? Is, is, are there things that we can do to?
Yeah.
Get Roots out into the community to, to seek placements?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. So um, so kinda these are some of the things that we've already started this year. So we um, have actually one student who's working with the technology department and has been building and fixing Chromebooks and is um, you know, doing a fantastic job. And so kinda the next piece for this individual is, is looking at, you know, jobs like, you know, within the community. So any technology-related fields, you know, that, that we have. You know, there's, there's other stores as well, just kinda in our neighboring towns. And so um, you know, our other big one has been the launching of Roots Roasters, which is the Roots Coffee Shop. So right now, they're, they're uh, opening doors Thursdays from nine-thirty to ten-thirty. Uh, it's two dollars per cup, or you can bring your own mug and it's a dollar fifty. And so kinda, you know, some, some new news, hot off the press. They're gonna be expanding and offering some drip coffee, cold brew. They're gonna work on increasing some snacks perhaps, so. You know, and then kinda the next part will be opening, you know, having greater hours as well. So um, all are welcome, so please come and, and check it out.
And what was exciting during opening, um, the um, election?
Early voting.
Early voting.
Yeah.
Is that we had more customers than anticipated, so it wasn't just their usual. And a lot of friends from Westford Academy who have had these students in the past wanted to show their support, so they've made, run over, grabbed a cup of coffee and left, so it's been.
Yeah, yeah, it's uh, it's, it's been really, it's, it's been very successful so far, the launching of that um, option.
Getting the menu, can I suggest hot chocolate for?
Hot chocolate, actually, they already have hot chocolate.
It wasn't a big order.
Sorry, and tea. There's, there's tea also and hot chocolate.
That's wonderful. Not everyone drinks coffee.
Exactly.
And the students were very excited to make sure that we knew that they had hot chocolate as well.
Yes, especially as the weather.
I'm glad you mentioned that perfectly.
So, yeah.
I would like to patronize, and I don't have to drink coffee.
We, we, we're trying to, you know, make sure we have every, everything covered, so. One of our adults in the program has actually partnered with the paralegal assistant training program. And so she last year had to apply for this uh, opportunity and did an interview, and she, she was accepted. And so she goes once a week to the courthouse, uh, the A.R. Shirley courthouse, and does a variety of, you know, supporting administrative tasks in the courthouse. She um, you know, there's a, there's a picture of her working on some filing. It's a pretty intensive system, so. You know, we, we send one of our job coaches with her that help to, you know, it's a lot of data tracking, a lot of figuring out how can, what are the supports that we might need to establish, you know, collaborating with, you know, our occupational therapist that supports the program, or a speech and language pathologist that supports the program, you know, what are the social, you know, supports that she might need, or the, the visual supports to help with, you know, doing the filing or data entry, you know, they're doing a variety of tasks. So um, you know, it's been a really successful program so far, and um, you know, it's been, it's been going great. They're wonderful um, at the courthouse, so some nice opportunities there. Uh, we have started also weekly lifelong fitness um, kinda a, a class. So our adaptive physical education teacher in the district is working with the program one day a week and uh, working on fitness activities. So, you know, it's a, it's a big part of just everyone's daily, daily life, you know, staying fit and, and, you know, making healthy choices. So that's kind of our lifelong fitness. I touched a little bit of it on the, on the cricket machine. We're doing a job for Abbott School, so we're helping to do some of the laundry there. So one of the nice features of the program is, is we have our own washer and dryer. And so, you know, it's, it's working on kinda the time management, the understanding, you know, it's not just the physical task of doing the laundry, but if we need to go and pick up the towels at Abbott, you know, what time do we need to pick them up? When do they need it by? When do we need to put them in the washer and the dryer? How long is the cycles, you know, for folding and then delivering it back? So it's a whole, you know, process that, you know, we kinda rotate the jobs through with all of the individuals. And again, these are, this is where that, you know, built-in, you know, supportive occupational therapy, for example, comes into place. You know, how are students folding the towels? You know, do they need support with that? Do we need to work on those, you know, finding gross motor skills with that regards? So those are just some of the examples of that integrated therapeutic approach for the program. The other part is, uh, we've partnered with Best Buddies for their pre-ets, their pre-employment transition services program. And um, so they come to, to the program once a week. They do lessons about, you know, different realms of self-determination, so self-advocacy, self-awareness, working on putting together resumes, practicing interviews, you know, whatever. They kinda coordinate with the staff of Roots to identify what are some areas of need and help to foster some um, lessons towards that. But also, it's all in relation to their, you know, employment services and their transition program as well. So there's a lot of opportunity to kinda continue building with um, Best Buddies and um, I'll get to another piece that we got to do. And then, uh, of course, the great part is, is just being able to participate and still be part of Westford Academy. I mean, we're under that umbrella, so uh, we were able to bring unified basketball this year, which has been incredible. And so most of the students in the Roots, in the, in the Roots program has been playing on the team as well. And um, it's, it's, it's been great. You know, they come back, they, they walk into the building. You think a celebrity is just coming through the halls and, you know, it's, it's a wonderful greeting. But, you know, you can see the development with, with the individuals too. You know, they, they, the first week it was, you know, okay, I'm back, I'm a high schooler, you know, type of thing. And now they're, you know, it's handshakes. It's not, you know, giving hugs to everybody. It's, you know, appropriate greetings. And, and those are the things, and that's, you know, again, where it was so important to not have Roots at the high school, because these are the areas that they need to develop. You know, I wanted to, to highlight, you know, what's, what's really beneficial and really necessary for the success of Roots so far, and then the continued success is really having a mode of transportation. So um, you know, having the van has really allowed for that collaboration with Westford Academy. We don't have to rely on, you know, trying to coordinate that transportation with D-Bus. We can bring the students right over to Westford Academy. We're going in and, you know, having students participate in the community, not just the grocery store, but going to different, you know, places in the community. There's some um, outdoor exploration that we're also doing, you know, learning about the trails and, and, you know, the different um, options that Westford has. And then with that, with, you know, kinda that collaboration with Best Buddies, they do a whole career exploration. So uh, at the end of October, actually, the Roots program went into Boston, into the Converse building. And they got to meet with different individuals at Converse to learn about the different jobs, what they needed to do to get that job. And then they got to tour the whole facility and see it kind of in action, get, get to ask questions. They learned some things. So it was a really great opportunity that if we didn't have the transportation piece, we would not be able to do.
They got to design their own shoes.
Yeah, yeah, I know. They did. They did. They got to design their own shoes. So it was um, you know, just a wonderful experience. They raved about it. And so we're, we're already coordinating kinda with, with Best Buddies on doing a few more of those, those opportunities, which is, which is really nice. So.
Sage, sorry, before you leave this slide, can you just remind me again what the acronym ETS is?
Yes, it's uh, Employment Transition Services. So it's Pre-Employment Transition Services.
Thanks.
Sage, can I just add one thing too?
Yeah.
Cause the, the Converse thing hap, the next day, we, we had actually had a, a social for central office that um, Kathy Mucci and others arranged and very much wanted to invite all of the Roots students and staff to participate. And they, uh, and Todd immediately took it as a fantastic learning um, opportunity, because these students were being adult, they were being invited to an adult gathering where people were bringing different, you know, snacks as we were kinda celebrating the end of October. And so we had a, you know, we had like a, 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 a small gathering with them, and it was just, it was really great. That's when I saw the Converse, cause they were wearing them and they were very happy about it. But it was just something that we were, it, it was just the other reason why it's so great to have them here in this building, because they're actually interacting with all of our departments on a regular basis. Todd did um, something early in the year where there was a, a different activity, similar to like a scavenger hunt, but it was just a different activity that really encouraged all the students to go throughout the building and interact with all of our different departments. And so that, you know, what Sage was talking about, that notion of like, you know, where, where people are making, you know, handshakes and they're greeting folks and they're, they're, they're not being treated like high school students, you know? And I think it's a big, um, it, it's just, it was great to see, that was just a real-time example of the way Todd is infusing different things that we're doing into an immediate lesson, cause they had been talking about, you know, what, what is it, what, what, what should they be bringing? And what, what should you be paying attention to when you come into the room as far as how, where the adults are? And it was a really nice event.
Yes, they sent me a lot of emails about that afterwards, and, you know, yelled at me for not coming.
I didn't bring it up for that reason, sorry.
It's okay, it's all right. It felt, you know, it's, it's good though, but, and, and it's true, cause a lot of the, you know, adults will come in and say, oh, it's Halloween, I get to dress up in my costume. And it's like, no, hold on, actually, you know, let's think of some other ideas and things that we could do that might be more, you know, appropriate for adults to be engaging in. So it was, it was, it was a nice way and.
Some of the adults were in costume, but it was a great conversation.
It's true, it's true. They did discuss that about, you know, kinda the expected things and unexpected things.
Right, exactly.
You know, it's okay costumes, but not going in saying trick or treat and asking for candy, right? So um, other pieces. So, you know, so we've started, you know, kind of a lot of these in-house, you know, within the program types of opportunities. So kinda the next piece is really starting to reach out to the community and start building some community, some uh, potential work sites. So um, you know, Todd actually went out uh, a couple of weeks ago and went to a whole bunch of places just within the community. We put together a big letter just kinda introducing the program, what's the goal of it, what would be kinda the role of the potential job site, what's kinda advantageous kinda both ways? How are we supporting one another and working together as a community on that? So um, that was kinda step one. The next piece will be, then be to kinda follow up with each of the places. You know, and this aspect of getting the job sites established is the most taxing, time-consuming component, because it takes a lot of collaboration. And so it's time from the program, it's time for, you know, any of the potential employers as well. Um, and it's new, and so it's, it's, it's really making sure that, you know, we're working, you know, within the means of the program, but also within the means of, you know, our community partner. You know, we, we did kinda put a blurb out in the, um, in Westford Academy's, you know, weekly update as well about it. And so, you know, just, that's, that's kinda the piece where we're at right now, is just working on trying to build these and establish them. So um, you know, that's, that would be, you know, great to kinda get some of those pieces going. We have students who are definitely ready to, to start moving outside and, and start, you know, thinking about what they wanna do and, and how to get there. You know, the students are, they're great, and, and I would say most of them are, you know, competitive employment is certainly, you know, a very attainable goal um, for them, and, and they all want to, so. So it's great. The other things we're kinda working on is there is an adaptive fitness um, gym actually in Acton that partners with other eighteen to twenty-two programs as well and some other adult programs. And so um, you know, there, it would be some adaptive fitness classes that we would be able to do kinda during the school day, which um, you know, would be fantastic. But the other pieces is kinda those social opportunities. And so, you know, this, this gym is owned by a, by a woman who's um, you know, has a, has a, has a son with, with special needs. And she really wanted to establish this, also to kinda branch out and make those social connections. So the, you know, the gym, in, in addition to kinda the fitness classes, also hosts a lot of social opportunities. So they have, you know, kinda monthly get-togethers, and it's a great way to just kind of expand the community really for, you know, all of our students, you know, who are eligible for those eighteen to twenty-two programs. And, and, and it's local, so it's, it's nice, cause it's local programs and, and kinda working on building those social connections and awareness. You know, our, our next, uh, next piece is gonna be using the cricket machine and coming out with some seasonal cards, you know, whether it's for, you know, holidays, or thank you cards, or, you know, whatever it might be. So the, the team is gonna work together. I'm coming out with some templates. We're gonna, you know, start it with, with, I think, the schools first and just kinda see, gauge the interest, and then we're gonna open it up a little bit larger. But um, you know, the cards will be, you know, designed by the, by this, by the individuals in the Roots program, and, and they'll be making them and then delivering them. So, you know, just again, just different options of working and looking at different, you know, vocational tasks and skills. Kinda already gave the spoiler alert about Roots Roasters expanding, so um, so that will be happening next. And, you know, it's a, it's, it's been a very successful launch so far, and, and it's gonna be important that we continue that success, but also continue to keep, you know, stretching the program further. And, you know, right now, you know, thanks to everyone here and, and other community members and schools, you know, we have so many of the resources that we could need um, to be able to do that. So, thank you, everyone. Questions, concerns?
Thank you so much. I'm sure there are some questions.
Oh, sorry, did you have a question?
No, I was just, go ahead, segueing. I was segueing, you're fine, go ahead.
So I just wanted to ask some questions, kind of expanding on Bill's question about like what vocational opportunities you're looking for. So um, so I guess some of my questions are like, how many hours a week are you looking for? Like what types of opportunities? Like I have seen historically in the State House, there'd be folks with special needs doing kind of like um, reception area type of tasks. And so I think that there's opportunities in that kind of environment for folks who, you know, receive a lot of visitors or, or, or maybe um, you know, reception areas like in gymnasiums or what have you. So what kind of hours are you looking for? Like what kinds of opportunities are you looking for?
Yeah, the, uh, great question. So a, a lot of that will come down to just partnering with, you know, the, the community partner really, and you know, what's nice is that there is some flexibility. And so if it's, you know, beneficial or, or necessary for the community partner to say, it would be great for like two hours a day, you know, that is something that we, we would be able to have the flexibility to do. So it's, it, it really comes down to, I think, the, the individuals, the community partner, and what the tasks are. You know, part ideally, you know, maybe it's starting at two hours and building up, right? You know, part of what we have to work on identifying is kinda that work stamina piece. And so, you know, how long can some of our students sustain, you know, whether it's one task or a couple of tasks and what type of setting? And so, so it really does depend on that partnership though. But, you know, we're, we're really anything and everything. The more that we can offer and the variety, you know, when you think of, you know, vocation and the different realms that that covers, you know, it's, 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 you know, looking at reception, it's looking at administrative tasks, it's looking at, you know, I know one of the places that we um, did an outreach to initially was, was the um, the Regency uh, in Westford. When we think of a place like that, there's so many options, right? But that kinda hits a good hospitality domain. Uh, there's, you know, the maintenance domain. So, so really, right now, we're, we're looking at everything and thinking of, of all different possibilities, because we don't know. We don't know yet what our individuals might wanna do. They, they might have one idea, but part of this is that career exploration too, to help identify and teach what are the different, you know, options and opportunities available.
Okay, thanks.
Tom has a question there as well.
Yep.
Don't know if you can see him.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, so uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, just along those lines of community partners, have you reached out to our town partners as well, um, town departments to see, you know, there's often administrative tasks that, you know, just need to get done. And uh, it could be an opportunity to interact with another clientele.
Absolutely. Uh, we have not done that outreach yet, um, but certainly on the list. So we kinda have bucketed this out into a couple of different phases, so that we're not just bombarding the community. So we kind of have bucketed this out into a couple of different phases so that we're not just bombarding the community all at once.
Just a couple of follow-on thoughts there is, um, I, I, either on your list or to add to would be, um, maybe advertising or, or putting something in the town manager newsletter. And then, um, there's a economic development consultant that's putting together a database of all businesses in Westford. And so making that connection so that you have that resource would be, would be helpful probably.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah.
Go ahead, Bill.
In some of those potential um community vocational setups, are you, I'm guessing maybe one-to-one or one-to-two? Like varying, you know, sorts of groups for maybe students to participate together or get that more direct coaching?
Yes, absolutely. And, and off the bat, whenever the students will be going, it's always going to be with a job coach. And that's something that we put kind of in that letter to explain that we're not looking for the ownership, so to say, or the responsibility of the community partner to be the one to train, you know, the individuals. That's what our job coach is there to do. So, um, you know, depending on the location, depending on what the tasks are. If it's appropriate to send two, maybe even three students to one site, we absolutely would do that. Or if it's appropriate for one student to go, we would do that. Again, that's what's nice is we have the flexibility to kind of do what's most important for the individuals.
You, you guys are really starting at that ground level where you're building this up. It's a very formative process and I think with that, you know, certainly it's daunting, right? To think of all these slots and how are you going to fill it a week? But you also have some real nice avenues to kind of take some different directions with it. So, um, as someone who's in the same field, I recognize and acknowledge that. And, um, it's, it's just exciting because, uh, what these students and our adults are going to learn from their self-determination, just in interest inventories, right? You know, they're going to go try this job out and go, I don't like that, you know, cross it off the list, right? You know, we can, we can steer somewhere else. Just fantastic opportunities that we're looking forward to seeing in the years to come, so.
Yeah, go ahead, Chuck.
Thanks, Sagil. Great presentation. If I'm, for those who are watching along at home and maybe they have their own business or interested in what, what you've been discussing. Who do they contact? Um, who do they reach out to and to discuss further?
Yeah, great. Um, you can, you can reach out to me and then, you know, I'll either be able to respond back or also I'll make the connection. Excuse me, with Todd Foster, who's our, our lead special ed teacher um for Roots. So, um, so yeah, you can definitely, I'll probably be the easier one to find, so.
Do you want to read your email, like state your email?
Yeah, so it's uh scosta@westfordk12.us.
Thank you.
I mean, if, if they send something to me, or honestly, if they send something to any of you.
Right.
Or if they send something to, you know, if, if they know Gerard Coughlin's, you know, their director of special education and social motion learning. Like if they send it to any of us, we'll, we'll get it to the right person, yeah.
Thank you. I had one last question, which was, can you speak a little bit about how, um, how the networking happens to other districts? To like, do peo- is, is the network so strong that everyone knows that this exists already? Or do you reach out and sort of, I don't know if advertise is the right word, but like make that connection so that other districts know it's an, um, it's an opportunity?
In terms of like for like that gym piece or just in general?
So are you, are so you're saying like, so the, you know, Dusty keeps like a list of programs that are, that exist that are like in this type of milieu and so like we would be on that list. So that's how other districts would find out about it because there's a Dusty approved list.
Great. I guess that was my question.
Yeah, and a lot of it too, from my experience, is also just kind of word of mouth too. So once, you know, one person kind of hears about it, it kind of, it, it spreads and it, and it goes, um, so.
Like Gerard Coughlin is a part of a network group of their surrounding towns. I am, Sagil interacts with counterparts. And so as we were building this, people were talking about it. So then people who know whether they have something similar, whether they don't, it's something that, it's on someone's radar. If they think, hey, instead of my student traveling here, I might like actually prefer something like this, I think that's out there, yeah.
And that's pretty common with any of our sub-separate programs. That if a neighboring um public school does not have the capacity to program, they might reach out to their area directors and say, I need some help with a preschool age student. We're at capacity. Do you have something that might need, or a deaf, hard of hearing program? And, um, obviously this type of program. In the past, we have tapped into other public schools to send our students out to theirs. And so this is great that we were certainly not foolish when we, um, hired Sagil three years ago and grabbed her from a private seven sixty-six school, knowing that she had just really specialized in, in this area. So this has been a great addition.
Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are going to pivot to MCAS data.
Hey, I, I don't want to follow that. But we, we will, we'll jump it right into MCAS.
Thank you.
There we go, great. So, um, we're here obviously to talk about MCAS. And as a reminder, MCAS is a uh set of state's uh exams that are often given to our students in grades three through eight, as well as grade ten in the areas of English Language Arts and Mathematics. Um, we are also testing in the area of science for fifth grade and eighth grade and, uh, and ninth grade and civics in the eighth grade. Now, moving along to the next slide. Um, as we all know, about a week ago today, we were in the uh election booths. And we were asked to consider question number two. And there was a fifty-nine percent uh in favor of removing MCAS as a competency determination for a diploma. So, few things that this does and does not do. It does remove that competency determination from the state level. It does not reduce or eliminate MCAS moving forward at any grade level that we know of at this point. It does not change the use of MCAS exams in the state accountability system on how they are viewing Westford Public Schools as well as other public schools. And nor does it stipulate any alternative statewide standard for high school graduation. So, we are at this point awaiting further guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Expecting that to come out sometime at the beginning of December. Where most likely at this time, uh, that determination will be volleyed back to the school in ter- into the districts in terms of the certification path and what meets that criteria for earning a high school diploma. There are a couple little nuances that are along the way, um, including the seal of biliteracy. In the past, we have had Stephanie Devlin come and speak to, um, the committee in terms of the seal of biliteracy. And one of the components in that is not only passing the stamp test in their area, um, in their foreign language, but as well as demonstrating competency within their tenth grade English Language Arts. So really they're going to have to determine whether this plays into it or, or not, or whether they stay the course. So there's a lot to continue to hash out. Westford Academy did share with us that on the day after voting, um, some students skipped into the school thinking that they were not going to have to do their.
Retest.
Retest.
Which was the next day.
Unfortunately, they were the next day. And I believe that a couple of more have continued for this year. So our administration did the right thing in encouraging everybody that we are going to stay the course in terms of, um, the, the retest. It's still state law up until December fifth, I believe. And so we are still abiding by that and offering, um, the retest. So our students were champs and they plugged away at it. So moving on first to, um, some of the high school data. Now a lot, there's so much to be said within all of the data that's presented from MCAS. And, um, certainly this is just, um, a high-level snapshot of what you're looking at right now. In terms of the tenth grade English Language Arts, where eighty-eight percent of our students are meeting or exceeding the expectations. Similar, you can see that on the left-hand side is a representation of Westford Public Schools. And on your right-hand side is how we are compared to the state. And so when we look at the blue and the green columns, those are the areas where we are either exceeding or meeting expectation and, um, doing quite well in that. On the next slide, you'll see how the trend has gone for the past four years in the area of tenth grade English Language Arts, which has been quite similar. In terms of our consistency, um, with, um, around the eighty-eight percentile. Sometimes they're dipping down a little bit lower, a little higher, but definitely around that number. Moving on to mathematics in grade ten. I think that we're there yet. Eighty-five percent of our students are meeting or exceeding, which is again similar to the four-year trend that you will see on the next slide. Compared to the state. And the same is true for science at eighty-seven percent of our students meeting or exceeding. Now, not all students pass, right? The first time, they're afforded four opportunities in high school to continue to work towards, um, meeting and exceeding. Because that's the marker that we would like our students to be at. There are several support systems that are set up along the way at the high school. Probably the one that's most important is really having students meet with their counselors and/or professor in that certain grade and understand what their particular data talks about. So as, I'm just showing you some very simple bar graphs, but the data can drill down into where the student is falling down in terms of the concept, where they need to beef up a little bit more. It might just be on concepts. It might also be on, um, how they are responding. Whether that's a short answer, a long essay, or multiple choice. And so students can really understand what they need to concentrate on in order to improve in the next round of testing. Um, we also have academic support that's offered to both general education and special education students that are looking at more targeted instruction. And new this year, um, Westford Academy offered a course to sophomores who struggled with their biology MCAS. Biology MCAS is traditionally, um, given in their ninth grade year after they take the biology course. And for those who do not pass, they don't take the retake until the following February. So as you can imagine, you walk out freshman year from your, um, biology class and you're not thinking about it too much. And now you're well into your courses of study for sophomore year. And then in February, someone says, hey, let's take that biology MCAS again. So this past year, they did start a new course, a new integrated science class where it, um, the instructor was, um, concentrating on biology in the first semester and chemistry in the second semester. So doing everything that we can to really help those students stay fresh with bio and have every opportunity to pass.
And Courtney, just to say, those students that pass do the retakes on the MCAS. That data doesn't necessarily get captured, does it, in, in this data? Like this is just this, this spring, so.
Correct.
Even though it's saying, for example, in twenty twenty-four, we had, um, one percent of students not meeting expectations. That may not actually be the case, once they've retaken the test at some point or whatever.
Correct, correct. And, and even with the other students that are partially meeting as well. So, um, nice segue into that. We did have, um, some, you know, only a small select two students, um, from the class of twenty twenty-four who were challenging, uh, were challenged in passing that MCAS. One of those students was, um, brand-new to the district in his senior year. And so, um, we were able to, I was speaking with Bob Ware, who said that in, the first time in his career, he's actually had to go through the appeal process. And in this case, um, certainly whether a student has been with us since preschool and kindergarten or whether they join us in, uh, their twelfth grade year, they are our students, they are our responsibility. And so in this case, Bob Ware worked with his, um, teachers to be able to demonstrate competency in this area and obtain a high school diploma, which was great. We did, like, um, we just stated that several students participated in the ELL retake. And, um, of those twelve students that did, eight were brand-new to our district. So again, um, as much as some of the data is a snapshot of our district, sometimes, again, a moment in time, because now we're looking at who the students are in front of us and not necessarily a student who might have gone through, um, Westford since, um, kindergarten. So moving along to the elementary and middle school, um, data. The next few slides that you're going to see are a combination of grades three through eight. Again, with Westford Public Schools showing up on your left side and, um, the state on the right. You can see that the, uh, meeting and exceeding, the blue and the green graphs are not as high as our high school. But we are staying in line, um, pretty consistently of how we have done in the past four years. So this year, we have sixty-one percent of our students meeting or exceeding in the English Language Arts, opposed to the state that has thirty-nine percent. Looking at, um, the four-year trend there, our numbers were quite similar with sixty-five percent in two thousand and twenty-three, sixty-five percent in two thousand and twenty-two, and a seventy-three percent in two thousand and twenty-one. And so we do seem to be a little bit consistent in that type of testing. In math, we have seventy-one percent of our students that are meeting or exceeding, opposed to the state at forty-one percent. And again, in a four-year, um, view, that is quite consistent with seventy-one percent, seventy-one percent, and sixty-five percent for those four years. MCAS is only tested in grades five and eight, um, which you can see on, on the next slide. What's different really, when you're looking at elementary, is that our students are still developing. And developing at so many, at such a different pace as other students. Some of our students are still struggling to, um, em- embrace and really hone in on their foundational skills, while others are working more on the application skills. And so when we look at MCAS, it's not just taking a look at, do you know, um, can you read, write, and complete mathematics? But how do you incorporate that? And how do you analyze it? And how do you explain it? And the different ways of, um, reporting back out. So these are types of questions that students are very familiar with, within their own curriculum. But still during MCAS, it's a different type of a test and something where they're all developing and still moving along. So with anything, we're always looking at where are our, our, our achievement and opportunity gaps. We talk about opportunity gaps in that some of our students, such as our ELL students, are moving into the country and being exposed to sometimes the English language, um, for the first time, or others more of a rigorous system. And so with our ELL students who are new to the country, um, they are not required to take MCAS in their first year. But starting in their second year, they are taking it as well as their own set of testing, like the access testing. Different accommodations are afforded to some of our ELL students, such as dictionaries in their own language. And, um, we do have Spanish MCAS that's available at the tenth grade. And we do have Spanish MCAS that's available at the 10th grade level for math and science, not in English. And then the goal for 2025 is to have Spanish available for grades three through eight. That's great for our Spanish-speaking ELL students, but as we know in our community, there are far more languages than just Spanish. And so thankfully, we have that. But there's still a lot of work to do if we're going to see how that plays out. This next slide that we're looking, oops, if you could go back one more, I'm sorry. Looking at the high-needs categories. The Department of Ed defines high-need categories as students with disabilities, EL or former EL students, low income, and then the high-needs. The high-needs category will capture students that might fall into several of those categories.
Right, so you can't add them up?
Yeah.
You can't add them up, right?
Yep, right. And so what you're looking at right now are grades three through eight for English Language Arts and in mathematics. And when we, really, in fairness to the students who, in this case, they're working very hard, right? They have, if they're a student with a disability, then they're already at a different level and working on their own individual goals and objectives. And so we're really looking at where they're partially meeting or not meeting and saying, how can we bump them into that next category? What are the interventions that we need to provide to them so that they have every opportunity to be meeting and/or exceeding those categories? You'll see that there are few that are meeting or exceeding. And that's not a surprise when you think about what the eligibility process would look like for special education services, knowing that there's two prongs to that. One, meaning that there's a disability. And the second one, knowing that they are not meeting the expectations of the general education classroom. And so that in itself will lend itself to how, you know, not being in those two categories. That doesn't mean that we give up. That means that we certainly dig in a little bit deeper. And knowing that these are grades three through eight. But when then we go back and we reflect on the high school data and we see where our students are landing, that is a success story, that the students continue to work very hard. The more exposure that they are getting to not only their own specialized instruction through their IEP, but also to be part of that rich general education curriculum is definitely preparing them for more success in high school. And that's what we would like to see.
A quick question here, Courtney.
Sure.
Are, in the bar charts that we've gone through so far, are those including high-need? Is that full populations in there?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Now, there are some of our students who do not participate in the traditional MCAS, either with or without standard or non-standard accommodations. And right now, in this past year, we had twenty-three students that participated in an MCAS alt. And that is where their teacher works very hard to put a portfolio together and to make a crosswalk between what is a student's work sample and match it up to the standard in which it's being measured. So this is a tremendous amount of work for our teachers that do put these portfolios together. And you can see here that in ELA, sixty-five percent are progressing and thirty-five percent are emerging, opposed to the state where forty-four percent and forty-four percent were progressing and emerging. In mathematics, on the right-hand side, we had seventy-eight percent that are progressing and another four percent that are emerging, compared to a sixty-seven percent and a twelve percent at the state level. Not all of these students that participate in MCAS alt will result in a, in a high school diploma. They're not, they might not all be on that high school diploma track. But at any point, they are welcome to, if the team feels as though that they are ready and can demonstrate using a pen and paper test, they will have that option of taking the regular MCAS with accommodations or continuing to participate in the MCAS alt, which would have, you can demonstrate competency through that. And I keep referring to competency, even though competency just went away. But I guess that's gonna take some time to get used to that part.
Does there, is there any discussion, Courtney, about, and I know it's still early days, but with the current MCAS requirements now gone for graduating, that a student who's passing the MCAS alternate assessment and managing their classwork and stuff, could they graduate then with a high school diploma from WA essentially, or from the district? I don't know if that's a.
Right, I think that would depend on who the student was and what type of courses that they were taking.
Okay.
And so that's definitely a possibility. I think we saw a little bit of that during COVID, where we didn't have the opportunity necessarily to have MCAS. But if a student demonstrated a passing grade in a course, then they were given credit for that. So we'll have a lot more discussion that'll have to take place.
Thanks.
Regardless of being able to pass that high school diploma, when someone would choose to accept a high school diploma might be at a different time. Certainly, if they're going to continue with us till twenty-two years old, they're not going to accept that diploma at that time. So if we zoom in a little bit, how does this data inform the instruction and intervention that we're doing on a daily basis in the classroom? I'm gonna give you just a couple samples. You certainly don't want to sit through a whole data meeting that's happening at each of the levels, at each of the schools, on a regular basis, several times a year. But on the top chart, what you'll see is the MCAS data for grade three for all students. On the bottom section, you're looking at the Spring Eye Ready Math Diagnostic. And so this is the same cohort of third-grade students who took the Spring Eye Ready and then also at a similar time took the MCAS. And the percentage of MCAS meeting and exceeding is at sixty-four percent, where if you look at the dark green bar, the percentage of the Eye Ready mid-grade and above-grade is sixty-one percent. Pretty similar in their percentages. And so in speaking with Julie Kelly, who is our coordinator at the elementary level for STEM, she said, you know, really, there should be no surprises if we're looking at our dark green. It's a very nice indicator of how students might look for the MCAS. So that's reassuring that our diagnostic, that we are putting our students through several times during the year, are yielding some of the same results that we would ultimately like to see with our MCAS students. Now, looking at the next slide, what we, what we do with that information is certainly, under each bar graph and percentage point and whatnot, has the data behind it. And we look for standards that stand out as, wow, we missed the mark somehow in our curriculum instruction, because we had a higher percentage of students who might not have done well within that standard. So still, looking at that same third-grade cohort, the focus, one of the focus areas that have been identified is around fractions. And so what we're doing with that data this year to inform our instruction, both in third grade and fourth grade, is we need to grab those current fourth-grade students who didn't perform as well as we would have liked in that area of fractions and revisit the concept, whether that includes whole group or small group settings. Certainly, that determination might be made once we realize whether that student is going to require a tier-two level of intervention. For the third grade, who had nothing to do with it, they didn't take the test, right? So, but what we, we want to make sure is that we are reflecting on the curriculum, because something had to have been missed somehow. And quite possibly, it might have also been in the timing of when something is taught and when another, when it's being assessed. So grade three needs to kind of have their antennas up in terms of what is that concept and what's the best way to, to tackle that. This is another way where sometimes, you know, when you look at the K to two level, they're kind of like, oh, not me, right? And we're not part of this. But it's a perfect example of how, when we're looking at grade three, how we need to continue our communication with second grade and to say, this is where we're seeing our strengths. This is where we're seeing some weaknesses. In the area of English Language Arts, DIBELS has been our foundational diagnostic test that we use. And this is some information that some of you have already been privy to when Erin Hogan, our humanities coordinator from the elementary, debriefed with us following our Nabnasset and Abbott School visits in which we were looking at UFLI in the EL curriculum. And so here are some exciting data. It's very easy to excite both Erin and Julie when they're looking at data. Very exciting. But you can see where the blue-shaded area in the first column, this is the beginning-of-the-year composite scores for DIBELS in 2024. And each of these grade levels have been exposed to UFLI whether, from their previous years. If you look at the diagonal, especially the bright blue that has been highlighted, you can see how the students have increased each year. And finally, in 2004, yielding an eighty-five percent, which they are absolutely thrilled with, that score. And again, noting that this is just the beginning-of-the-year data. So where are they gonna be at the mid-year and the end of the year is very exciting to be able to see the results of that UFLI education. The EL curriculum, which we also viewed, will certainly take a little bit longer to start seeing, yielding some of the results. Three to five started last year. K to two jumped in this year. So we have a couple two different points where we've initiated both of that, the rollout of that curriculum. But we are expecting that we're going to see the same type of solid results. When we're looking at our MTSS model and our interventions, certainly, we're continuing to target any student that requires the support. And our coordinators are also telling us that right now, the fourth and fifth grade are feeling a little bit more of those intervention supports that they are getting.
The BOY there is beginning-of-year. I remember when I first saw that, I was like, wait, this is odd. We don't break this down like this anymore. I'm not sure why we're doing this. But it's beginning-of-year composite scores. This would be last year's?
No, this year's. Right, well, if you look at the first column, it says 2024. But then you'll have the same for twenty-three and twenty-two. So where they were at each of the beginning of the year. The next slide.
Oh, which one was that?
That guy, yeah, there we go. And so there are challenges and there are successes, right? So in the yellow highlights, you're looking at MCAS grade three of where we're below the fiftieth percentile and need to continue to work. And then on the two orange highlighted areas, we have actually fallen behind the state on those two areas. And so those are definitely areas that we need to focus our attention, look at our instruction, and, and deal with that as a, as a whole group. Definitely tier-one instruction. And then you can see where our successes have been.
Can you just, what do you, can you explain what the below fifty percent yellow marking means? Below fifty percent of?
In regards to how the state is doing? So we're not at that, on the opposite side where we were looking at, oh, great, we were in the eighty-eighth percentile of meeting and exceeding. These are the areas where we are not meeting and exceeding.
So fifty percent or less of our students can write an essay?
Yeah.
State is below fifty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which is why there's two that are, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So with our MTSS intervention model, it is imperative that all of our students continue to receive grade-level instruction during all UFLI times, the EL whole-group instruction, any kind of skills block, the mathematics, when the instruction is being delivered by the general education teacher. Our first line of defense is always having a nice evidenced-based curriculum, which they do have at the elementary, both in math and English Language Arts. The interventions, we need to make sure that they are serving as a double dose of intervention for those students that qualify for the said services. And so we are carefully looking at who those students are, how quickly we can get to them and return them to their gen ed classroom. And so that is something that, those decisions are made at each of the building levels during their data teams.
Thank you.
And that's all I have to share at this time.
Well, Albert Einstein.
Little Einstein, stole that.
Could you talk a little bit more about the data meetings? Who's as part of that? And you've, I feel like we've seen a little bit of the reflections, like the outcomes of those in your data or in your presentation. So I'm just curious a little bit more of like, who's in the room? And if you could specify, like, how often those assessments happen and how often the data team?
So the principals and the assistant principals are definitely in the room as instructional leaders. Our curriculum coordinators are there. Definitely a little bit more of a challenge this year, knowing that Julie and Erin have.
Six schools.
Six schools to attend. The literacy specialists for each one. And then depending on if they're able to bring in grade-level teachers to sit in on some of those meetings, then they're there as well. Sometimes the interventionists are taking part in those meetings. But other times, they are, you know, on the receiving end of who they're going to have. When they're having the dating, data meetings for a student that they have service, they are definitely at the table so that they can offer their input.
Real-time sort of feedback, yep.
Well, the data meetings are different than an IST as well.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
So the data meetings, they'll tend to be talking more the, the larger picture. The aggregate. And an IST, which is the instructional support team, that's when people are coming together to talk about a specific student.
Right.
More, more specifically, as opposed to.
And how often are the, the big-picture ones happening?
Three times a year?
Yeah, after the, they're, they're, they gather after they've completed the assessments.
Like the DIBELS and the Eye Ready. Post-assessment, thanks.
Any other questions from the committee? Tom has a hand, I think.
Oh, yeah.
So I just wanted to point out the, that I appreciate the fact that you're highlighting rooms, room for improvement on the district level, because I think that is where the value of the MCAS remains and why MCAS will still be there, why we're still going to administer MCAS, even if it isn't a graduation requirement per the state. I think that if the school, if the district is able to take some lessons out of the data and reassess how the concepts are taught, when they're taught and all of that, that's how we can continue to use this data to, you know, ensure that our students are getting a competitive education, so.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. Tom, too, the, the other.
Tom, too, the the other thing I hope people paid attention to is as Courtney's sharing the information, when we're looking at the results, we're looking at the specific standards, right? And so that's what our curriculum is based on, the standards. And so when people talk about teaching to the test, the idea being is that, well, we're focused on the standards the whole time. And so the teachers are breaking it down to see, okay, this data is showing us that students didn't exhibit a mastery of this standard, which is different than whether or not they're learning how to how to take a test on a computer or whether they're, we know that there are some of those challenges that existed, especially when we transition from one platform to another. But, you know, I think that that's just another thing to consider as we're looking at, okay, wait a second. What is this telling us in our curriculum that might not have been, might might not have been highlighted based on this data if we thought that it was?
Thanks.
Just going to ask, I mean, we know that not everything in learning happens in the school setting. So as a parent, one of the questions that I would ask is, as students go through the grade years and that data is kind of poured over by specialists and our interventionists and our curriculum coordinators, are there things that could be echoed to parents to be helping to do at home from the foundational levels, pre-K, kindergarten up through, you know, as kids get older and, you know, helping support homework and those sorts of tasks? Are there things that we could be helping to echo to parents to, you know, double dip? We talk about interventions, we talk about, you know, double doses. I I don't know. I'm just, you know, that effort to.
I I think the best way to do that is really what's embedded in the EL curriculum, where they do bring in that family component, right? And try to offer some, this is what we're working on. And how can they build on those types of skills? Sometimes we see panic if we say, these are the skills that we need to remediate for, you know, MCAS purposes. Because they might jump to, is there a disability? Should the child be tested? Which might not necessarily be the best course of action. But I do believe that there's a lot of communication that's taking place. I can certainly follow up with the elementary staff to see if they agree with that, if they are communicating on where they'd like to see more practice or drill or some sort of remediation, that might be helpful.
See, like, the teachers often put out their, you know, sometimes weekly, you know, newsletters.
Those are things you can be doing at home.
Things that can be communicated that we can help, you know? So it's not all on the schools. I mean, it is, you know, it's very much the work you guys do, but also that the parents are also coming in and helping out as well.
On the flip side of what Bill is saying, I think that, you know, some of the reasons why our school system is so successful is because there's so much ability for parents to be involved and and what have you. And I think that some of the data that I've been interested in the past that wasn't presented tonight is around demographics and the disparities between different demographics in our in our district. And I think that's something that I'm really interested in, that, you know, that we know that kids are performing on MCAS sometimes differently because of different advantages they may or may not have. So that wasn't in tonight's, but it had been in past presentations that we've done. And I think one of the other things I'll say is that, you know, all the figures that we were looking at tonight are definitely like post-COVID. And it'd be interesting to see how that compares to pre-COVID numbers.
Two thousand nineteen.
I just wanted to kind of pipe in, if that's okay? So I got in into a deep dive over last night looking at at the MCAS. And it was just something that I kind of wanted to raise. And some of it kind of came out of that initial data that we were seeing with Erin and Julie that day we did the school tours. And it was in particular, looking at the ELA. And, you know, I, the overall data we were looking at for that three to eight block over the last four years, we've gone from seventy-three percent to sixty-one percent. And I actually dove a little bit in and pulled out. I had it printed off before, I just added the twenty twenty-four information to it to kind of really have a look at the various grade levels, in particular with the ELA, and how was that showing up over the past couple of years? And something kind of kind of came out of it that I felt that I really wanted to kind of raise the issue with tonight, especially as we're kind of looking towards, you know, planning for next year and budgeting and all that to kind of, you know, maybe this is something we can scope out a bit more and have a conversation with at a later date. So I started looking at, you know, what I was kind of seeing between the third, fourth and fifth grade ELA numbers, you know, kind of gave me a pause for thought. And kind of thinking about, these are students who are either kindergarten or first grade when we COVID hit or we had the hybrid year and stuff. So I know their start off in in that whole foundational reading and literacy skills was was very different. But what I noticed was our, the fifth grade ELA achievement, in twenty nineteen, we were at seventy-four percent for either meeting or exceeding expectations. And this year, we were at sixty percent. And then our fourth graders ELA went from seventy-three percent in twenty nineteen to meeting and exceeding to forty-eight percent in twenty twenty-four. And then our third graders went from seventy-eight percent in twenty nineteen to fifty-nine percent in twenty twenty-four. And even kind of taking, you know, the the COVID out of it and just kind of looking at those last three or four years, we were still kind of declining. You know, we've gone from, you know, gradually slowly moving down the the achievement levels in these few years. And so it's something I kind of wanted to raise tonight, that I'm very aware that, you know, our third graders are now in, you know, fourth grade and hopefully have the benefit of of the next two years of intervention. And that with the setup we have at the elementary schools. I'm a little bit concerned for our fifth graders kind of moving up into the high school or middle school. I'm kind of wondering what our intervention looks like to follow this this year up, based on the data that I think Erin had also shown us, some of the the DIBELS data. I think you could even see the correlation of the scores weren't improving for that fifth grade, current fifth grade year. And so I suppose the question is, knowing this information and that the data seems to be kind of reflecting it, are we having any conversations about how do we continue to support that group of students, knowing that they're going, they're potentially going to need the support because of the start of their 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 schooling experience in Westford? And I and I do take into account that I know a lot of the data presented here tonight was, you know, also comparing us to the state and going, you know, compared to the state, this is, you know, we're doing well and that's fantastic to see. And I take that with, you know, for what it is. But I also think we have to compare ourselves to ourselves as well. And I think, Dr. Chu, as you had said before, and, you know, it's it's about progress, it's not about perfection. And it's about looking at our data and saying, well, you know, two years ago, our fourth graders were in twenty twenty-two getting about sixty percent of meeting and exceeding expectations. This this year, we scored forty-eight percent. And so regardless of what's happening in a statewide level, we have to look at, well, what does that mean? What's happening within our district? And so I kind of wanted to raise this, not necessarily for us to dive into tonight, because I know we, you know, you're not the literacy expert, Courtney and stuff. But it's something that I would be very conscious about and wanting to have a further discussion because knowing that unfortunately, we had cuts within our interventions at the middle school last year, I just don't know if our middle school teachers are equipped to, I suppose, maybe fill those gaps, knowing that they just kind of move in it in it. You know, they move on to, they have different curricula to follow and and state standards to to work towards. So I don't need to have a response tonight. But I think it would be, I would really appreciate if it's a conversation we could have and as we go through budget season, because usually things cost money if we're looking at, or potentially.
I remember seeing that the day that we went out to observe those figure, that data.
It was part of the DIBELS that you were talking about right there.
Right, and I remember there was a concern for that class and thinking that interventionists at the middle school or something to support those kids, some kind of program to support those kids was really necessary.
Yeah. And it's not necessarily something we may need forever. It might be something that we only need for those students for a year or two years and until we see where we're going, but.
Well, what we do start with is we ask that question of our of our curriculum team in terms of what what exists? How do you address this problem? Before, I don't, it might not be, what do you need to increase, right?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
But in that transition, you're saying like, if we've seen this consistent, consistent data point with this specific grade, and instead of just saying, okay, well, we know why, what is our response then to address it if we've identified that it needs to be addressed? Right? Like, I feel like your your point is well taken. Like, let's look at this and say, okay, how is that going to inform what we do for this grade as we move forward? I mean, Courtney showed how each grade will look at the data and say, oh, you know, the third, the fourth grade example was great. So it's a question of when we're transitioning from one school to another, though, how is that conversation take place? It's one thing if it's the third and fourth grade teams within the three to five grade, school grade. They're that principal and those curriculum coordinators can be having that conversation. When our curriculum coordinators go to grade five, so now what conversation is going to take place between the the K to five and the six to twelve people? So I think that's what we need to look at and say, okay, well, are there things that we need to be doing? Is there, do we do we understand what this data is telling us? One of the things that came up in that conversation was like, you know, we don't use DIBELS past grade five. You can, but we don't, right? So then is is that something then that we should be considering to see? Is it important to continue or to connect the data in some way so that the next data set is not unusable because it's so, it doesn't, it's not compatible?
Suppose the one thing is, DIBELS really is only a reading assessment, whereas the MCAS is more of a literacy, like the writing and everything, which is not something we assess within our own district. So while I suppose maybe the IREDD, the math is a bit easier to to compare, the DIBELS doesn't necessarily give you that full literacy picture, which when we know come middle school, the essay writing and really starts to, you know, there. So that's when they need those kind of all round literacy skills.
And so, yes, to that point, in terms of we need to make sure that we're keeping our eye on any cohort of student who that doesn't seem to be at a level where we would be happy. But the other piece is that this is the beginning of the year data, right? And so we have all year to intervene at that time, at this point. And so having this information, I know that that's where the data teams have definitely focused in on those two grades.
I think for me, what I'm hearing and want to make sure is tied back around in some sort of circular way is when the budget was changed to support the elementary interventionists and with the override failure reductions of the middle school interventionists, one of the things we had talked about was that we know that there might be some changes at that MTSS delivery level. And so I guess I'm kind of curious how you both see that conversation, that next step of that conversation going? Is that tied into the budget? Is it separate to the budget? Can we, is there like a further meeting topic?
Not to interrupt you, I'm sorry. But I was, that's kind of what I was getting at in the terms of, I I want the six to twelve, specifically the people who help oversee what is going on with the curriculum in six through eight, to look at this data and speak up and say whether or not they are concerned. Because they're going to be the first ones to say, well, this actually, we do, we do have X, Y, and Z in place already, or this is how we would address this. Or, yes, that's an interesting viewpoint to look at that data point. However, it's not really different than this grade or this grade when we look at that as well. You know, so I want to see, the the point with the DIBELS piece, which again, I appreciate that it's different, was showing us the difference between the students who have had three years or any of the years of the new curriculum versus the fifth graders who did, who they just don't have as much of that. And so the question is, is, okay, well, how do you then address that as they go to sixth and seventh grade? But I think the first thing is to have that conversation to find out, are there are there people who are alarmed by this information? Or is this similar to something else that they've seen? In which case, this is how they would respond to it and address it. But I feel like that conversation happens first before you then figure out, well, what is is the structure that we have appropriate?
Sure.
Is the, are the, you know, is the curriculum or the resources? That when we go back to the MTSS aspect of it, the there, there is tier one and tier two and tier three at every level. So how is that going to support it at the at the middle school?
And one of the things, too, was to dive a little bit deeper, was the entry and exit criteria and making sure that that sort of got crystallized, I guess would be a good year, good word for this year. So I guess I'm just wondering when when that fits into our year long agenda to maybe bring back. We could talk about that, I guess, as we.
I mean, I would say some some of that, I think, when, as we, as we're looking at how outside of the budget, yes, we want to look to see what the structures are that we have in place. As we're looking at the development of our of our budget for FY twenty-six as well, we're looking at what our needs are. And so you're going to see some of that information, I think, come to you in ways that you can say, oh, okay, well, that makes sense to me, or that doesn't make sense to me.
Just Tom, Tom still has his hand up. I don't know if he wants to.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, so I, Clark, am I wrong? Like, I thought I heard you or heard it stated that we were looking at these things at the building level. And I would hope that we also look at it as a holistic district level. A, to be able to figure out what that model should be for intervention. But B, to have that communication and the equity between the the buildings of what's offered. And, you know, lesson learned, I guess, is a good way to put it. You know, that that we're sharing across the district, what what has been working, what has been tried, what didn't work, all of that. And I I would hope that the the principals are talking about that, that, you know, the teachers themselves are talking about it, that all the curriculum coordinators are are having those discussions. So, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're, we're to the best of our ability having that holistic approach to the the entire structure, how we how we improve the district, so.
Yeah, I I appreciate that, Tom. I think I think either you misheard me or I didn't say something clearly. I wasn't implying that individual buildings were going to be the only ones who are going to be solving this problem. That's why I was saying, the first thing is to have the curriculum, the curriculum leaders who are connecting all of the buildings throughout the district and both horizontally and vertically, that they should be a part of that conversation.
Thank you. I'm going to move us on to the FY twenty-six budget timeline. And I think there's a graphic that outlines for the public and for us to save the dates for the budget process.
Yes. So, yeah, whether that, I don't know, it was in the packet, so hopefully you've all seen this.
Yeah. You can talk to it.
So the, as indicated, there are bolded items which are fixed dates. So I will be presenting the my proposed budget to you on December ninth. The town manager will be presenting the the town budget the next evening to the select board. Then what we've looked at, as we've looked at our calendar, is that we will have a December sixteenth, that's the next week, because of the way in which the winter break falls, that we originally had that on our schedule as a tentative meeting. But we're going to go ahead and have that school committee meeting so that we can have, begin the deliberations of of the budget. So you'll have plenty of meetings to to discuss this. January sixth will be the publicized, we have to publicize something in writing as part of the MGL. Because it's, as you all well know, the the school committee goes through a more extensive process, looking at the school budget. And so you you have to have your own public hearing for that. And we've talked about this in the past, the timing of that can be odd if it's like the night that you're voting. And sometimes it was, I think in the past, it's literally been like, literally just before the vote.
Right. Right.
Which seems to defeat the purpose.
Right, well, and the law actually specifies, like, that the committee has enough time to react.
Right.
So it really should be separate from the vote.
So on the, on initial, there was an initial timeline that was following the same order of FINCOM hearings that we've used in the past, which would have put our, our first meeting with the FINCOM on January sixteenth. We did have a meeting at their efficiencies meeting the other night where we had asked them if they might consider swapping our first meeting with them to the twenty-third, so that it just allows more time for you to have your meetings before we actually go to the FINCOM for their hearing. So that's why there's, there's an or there, right? So it might be the tentative, January sixteenth is the tentative first meeting, we're waiting to hear back from the FINCOM and from select board as to whether that schedule is possible, because it would be rearranging different departments, and we didn't want that to have a negative impact on a different department, right?
Yep, yep.
Ideally, then, the January thirtieth is the follow-up meeting with the FINCOM, if necessary, if they have additional questions. Annual town meetings, March twenty-second, and that's when the, hopefully, the budget will be approved by a town meeting.
Great. So for anyone watching that wants to be aware of dates and be following along to the discussions or the data, these...
Basically, we start on December ninth, that's the first time I'm going to propose it, and then historically, it takes up your meetings for the next couple of meetings until, so if someone misses December ninth, they'll be able to watch that, and then they could jump into any of those, any of those other meetings. You will, you know, hopefully, you will vote your recommendation for, what did we have at there? We have the tentative vote on the, on the twenty-first, January twenty-first, if we're able to swap those dates around. If we can't swap those dates around, then we need to, we need to look at that.
Yeah. And I, I think, sorry to interrupt you, my takeaway to the, or my ask of the committee is to just be aware that really the meatier conversations or any questions or additional follow-up that you are interested in from the superintendent's presentation really has to happen between like the ninth and the sixteenth. So because of like the way the winter break falls, we're kind of crunching that piece, so it's going to be, obviously, I'm sure as soon as you have something that's ready to share, so that it's not real-time reaction, right, ahead of, ahead of the meeting if possible. And then we'll be really trying to accelerate any questions generated by the committee in time for those December sixteenth meeting.
I, I definitely anticipate that I will be sharing the presentation with you before the meeting. I, I, we won't be putting it in the packet before the meeting, though.
No, no, sure, yep.
But I will share with all of you before the meeting.
That's our practice, yep.
But then it'll just be in the packet just before the meeting starts, yeah.
Great. Any questions on that? Everybody marking their calendars?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And next up, we have policy updates, a second reading, which doesn't require waiving of readings, for both P four-two-oh-four, P five-two-oh-four nondiscrimination and harassment policy, and tied to a removal of two other redundant policies.
Yeah, so the only thing is to remind people, policy are meeting tomorrow, and just to remind people that, that those policies are up for public comment right now until the fifteenth, which is, what, Friday, before our final vote.
Okay. And the process has still been working out well for the policy subcommittee to be kind of editing and...
Yeah. We've probably done more policy work this side of Christmas than my entire time doing policy.
Okay.
And we've got one more to go that we're starting tomorrow, so...
Stay sharp.
We appreciate it on behalf of the committee, so...
Can't take it any more.
Any questions on that? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
On the second?
Bill seconded very quietly.
See, that's my problem. I moved over here.
Announce it, I heard him.
All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Tom? Catherine?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.